Cent, which is the red, the, the blue is R and D thirty percent, the retail is ten point five percent at the first level. And then we have the residential at twenty nine point five percent in yellow. And, um, and so then again, as you're looking towards Highland Avenue, you have a three story building next to a three and a half story building. Um, if you're looking from Highland Avenue towards Newton, again, you have the three story building at the corner that's defining the edge and creating a gateway. Oh, sorry. And then when you're looking from option two, um, from Highland Avenue Bridge towards Needham, you would have the three story building similar to, to Wing Gate. But then in the back of the site is where you would have the five story building. And as you head off of the ramp, that is where the taller buildings are, and that is where the si- the site slopes down. So this is the, the information on looking at what the zoning uh could be for those two sites for as a right and for special permit. And so now I'd like to hand it over to Rebecca Brown, who's going to talk about, uh, from GPI, who's going to talk about the traffic study.
Thank you very much, Natasha. Uh, yes, so what we were asked to do from a traffic perspective was to take a look at the site and the rezone. And to estimate, what's the maximum potential traffic that could be generated by? Um, a full build out of the site, assuming an FAR of one point three five. And then assess whether there is a reasonable mitigation package that could be implemented to offset the impacts from that development size. The study area that we were asked to take a look at in doing this analysis included the intersections along Central Avenue with Gould Street, Hampton Avenue and River Park Street. And then running along Gould Street included the intersections with Ellis Street, Kearney Road. The two current driveways into, um, Muzzy Ford and the, um, Channel Five building. And then the Highland Avenue Gould Street and Hunting Road intersection. Now, there was quite a bit of data that had previously been collected at the study area intersections back in two thousand fifteen as part of this rezoning effort, um, as part of a study that was done by Beta Engineering. And we were able to utilize those two thousand fifteen traffic counts that were collected at all of the study area intersections that you see here. Um, at the time that those traffic counts were being done, though, um, I ninety-five was being widened to add an additional travel lane in each direction. So there was some supplemental data that was collected in February of two thousand nineteen. Um, as part of a post, um, post-construction study for the Route one twenty-eight widening that included counts at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Gould Street to look at how that traffic had changed from February of two thousand nineteen. Um, in comparison to the two thousand fifteen counts. Uh, there was also some supplemental data that was collected in two thousand nineteen at the Gould Street and Central Avenue intersection by the town as well. So we took a look and compared those two thousand nineteen traffic counts to the two thousand fifteen data. And what we found was that the two thousand nineteen counts were actually about thirteen to fifteen percent lower than the two thousand, um, fifteen data was that was previously collected. So for the two locations where we had updated data, we did use that updated data because it represented the most recent counts. Um, and included the impacts from the Route one twenty-eight widening. For the other locations that you see highlighted here in blue, we used that data that had been collected, um, back in two thousand fifteen because it was higher to provide a worst case scenario of what traffic might look like in a build out condition. Now that data included traffic counts that were collected during the weekday morning peak hours. So within that seven to nine AM timeframe, when people are typically commuting to work. And in the afternoon peak hours from four to six, when people are typically coming home from work. That's consistent with, um, the intended uses at this site that would be a mix of, um, office and corporate office R and D retail space. Um, for when those developments would also typically peak out. Uh, next slide. So we projected those traffic volumes out to a ten year design horizon to a two thousand thirty condition. Um, and then we added the traffic that would be generated by the proposed development on top of those existing traffic volumes. And as I mentioned previously, we were asked to look at a worst case scenario build out with that one point three five FAR. And that essentially included a mix, as Natasha already mentioned, of just under eight hundred and seventy thousand square feet of total development. Um, which was roughly about three hundred and seventy thousand square feet each of, um, research and development space and corporate office space. And approximately a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of retail space. And again, that, that retail space is really intended to be ancillary retail space to the office and R and D, um, uses where it may be coffee shops, um, salons, barber shops, um, those types of uses that really provide a service to the, to the people who are already on site working there. Um, based on a comparison of what the existing site is generating with the Muzzy Ford and the Channel Five buildings on the site, when we compare what the proposed site would generate, it's roughly an increase of about eight thousand, uh, um, sorry, eighty-nine hundred trips in the, um, weekday daily. So across an entire day, um, on a weekday, it's roughly an increase of about eighty-nine hundred vehicle trips. And when I speak about a vehicle trip, um, that's a vehicle trip is either one vehicle entering the site or one vehicle exiting the site. So every car that comes to the site essentially makes two trips, one when they enter and one when they leave. So we're talking about roughly forty-five hundred vehicles that would be coming to the site on a daily basis. And that equates to about six hundred and fifty trips coming in in the morning peak hour in a one hour period in the morning. Um, and about, uh, just over a thousand trips exiting the site in the afternoon. Um, for, in comparison to the existing uses, that's the increase in traffic that we would see. Um, based on a one point three five FAR. Next slide. So once we had estimated how much traffic would be generated by this project or by the rezone of the site. Um, the next step was for us to distribute that traffic out over the roadway network. And we did this looking at a few different, um, types of models. The first we did was looking at existing travel patterns in this area, since there's already a mix of, um, commercial and office uses along Gould Street. We looked at how are people getting to this area right now? Um, another thing that we looked at was a journey to work model for the place of residency of the people who, um, are currently working in the area surrounding the, the interchange with Route one twenty-eight and where are those people coming from and, and going back to at the end of the day? And then for the retail component, we also took a look at what's the building density look like in a, uh, ten mile driving radius around the site? Um, for people who might come to use those, those coffee shops, um, and other retail uses from the surrounding area. And when we looked at all three of those models, they all came out pretty similar in terms of percentages of distribution of traffic on the, the surrounding area roadways. So it showed that about forty percent of the traffic would be coming to and from the Route one twenty-eight area or Highland Avenue, um, to the east of Route one twenty-eight. About fifteen percent of traffic coming from either direction along Central Avenue. About ten percent of traffic coming from Highland Avenue to the west and about twenty percent of traffic coming up Hunting Road, um, from the north. Next slide, please. So once we distributed this traffic out over the roadway network, the next step for us to do was to look at what impact does all of this traffic actually have on the, the intersections that we were looking at? And you can see that for a number of these locations here, um, the traffic operations look pretty good. So this is actually showing you the level of service of each intersection that we looked at in each individual movement through those study area intersections. And a level of service is similar to a grade in school where a, a level of service A is good and a level of service F represents a failing condition where there's more traffic going through the intersection than the intersection can really handle. So for these locations that you see highlighted in yellow and orange, these intersections are still operating very well, even with the additional traffic that would be generated, um, by the project at a level of service D or better, which is really considered a, a passing grade. Um, so these are acceptable operations. But there were four locations that we had identified that could potentially be operating at a level of service F, um, with that maximum build out scenario. Looking from kind of the left of the page over to the right of the page, um, starting at Central Avenue and Gould Street. Um, i- anyone who's driven through that area now probably knows that Gould Street already has pretty long delays and queues coming out of it under an existing condition that would be exacerbated by the additional traffic that would be generated um, by a development on the site. That site or that intersection is already being looked at by the town. It's already been prioritized for improvements and is being considered for installation of a traffic control signal at that location as well as some, some turning lanes. Um, so we do anticipate that those improvements would help to alleviate that level of service F. Um, and in a couple of slides, I'll show you what that would look like, um, once those improvements are constructed. The other locations where there were a level of service F over on the right-hand side of the page is at the two-site driveways where right now those two intersections, um, are unsignalized. Um, with only one lane coming in and out that really wouldn't function well for the volume of traffic that we would anticipate from a rezone of the site. The last location is the intersection of Highland Avenue and Gould Street. Um, where there's would be several levels of service F in the AM and PM conditions as a result of the additional traffic going through. Um, if there was not any mitigation implemented. Um, and as I mentioned at the beginning, really the intent is for us to estimate how much traffic could be generated and to determine what inappropriate mitigation might look like. And whether there is a mitigation package that could be constructed, um, that would offset these impacts. So our next task was to look at what could potentially be done to bring these intersections back to their no build condition so that they're at least operating similar to what they would if the site wasn't redeveloped. Next slide.
Is this the correct slide?
Yep. Sorry, I was lagging a little behind. Um, thank you. So this next slide is showing you what could potentially be constructed along the section of Gould Street between, uh, the northerly site driveway down to the Highland Avenue intersection to offset the impacts of, um, of the rezone. So the first thing that we looked at was really the site driveways and how can those two locations work? So what we found was that, um, the, the site driveways would require installation of a traffic signal at at least one of the two locations, which the better location appeared to be the southerly location, assuming that because most people want to head south and head out towards Highland Avenue, towards the highway. Um, that there will be a tendency to use that southerly driveway or the, the kind of middle intersection that you see there. Um, so we looked at installation of a traffic signal at that location. Um, the northerly intersection or northerly site driveway would not need installation of a traffic signal. Um, if there was one located at the southerly location. Now, obviously this is based on one potential layout of the site and a different layout could happen where, um, where maybe easier access wise for vehicles to get out the northerly site driveway. So that location could shift, um, for where a signal is proposed. But definitely at least one signal would be required to be able to get traffic out of that site. Um, with that, we found that both driveways also would warrant left turn lanes entering the driveways as well as right turn lanes entering the driveways from either direction on Gould Street. Both driveways would also require separate lanes exiting the driveway. Um, to provide left and right turn lanes coming out of the driveway. At the location that is signaledized, we would actually need to have two left turn lanes coming out of the driveway. Which would require us to also have two receiving lanes along Gould Street. So you can see here that there are two lanes along Gould Street extending all the way from the Highland Avenue intersection back up through to the northerly site driveway. Moving down to the Highland Avenue and Gould Street intersection. On the Gould Street southbound approach, this would need to be widened out to essentially provide four lanes coming into that signal. Where two, uh, two of the lanes would be for the left turn from Gould Street onto Highland Avenue that where we saw that forty percent of site generated traffic that would be headed towards the highway. There would then be a dedicated through lane onto Hunting Road and a dedicated right turn lane onto Highland Avenue headed out to the west. On Highland Avenue westbound coming from the highway, we would also need a channelized right turn lane onto Gould Street to help facilitate that heavy traffic volume that I mentioned, the forty percent of traffic that would be taking that right-hand turn onto Gould Street. Now, we would assume that as part of the mitigation, all of this widening would be done towards the site in order to minimize the impacts to, uh, private properties around the site and, um, along Gould Street and Highland Avenue. As a result, you can see here highlighted in the orange color, essentially a land taking that would be required from the front of the site to be able to accommodate this widening. So once we had identified these mitigation measures, we took a li- a look at what are the traffic operations following implementation of all of these, um, traffic measures. And if we go to the next slide. What you'll see is that we are able to bring the level of service of all of the study area intersections back to approximately a no build condition. Um, over at the Gould Street and Central Avenue intersection, you'll see that there is still a level of service E there. Um, in the, in the morning condition. Um, but that intersection is still operating much better than it is in a no build condition. So the delays going through that intersection would, would be alleviated by the installation of the traffic signal and the left turn lane on Central Avenue that's being considered by the town now. Um, moving over to the, the site driveways, the signaledized site driveway would operate at a level of service D or better, which I mentioned previously is considered generally a passing grade. Um, that we typically design for having a level of service D or better. Um, although the northerly site driveway would still experience a level of service E in the afternoon. Um, there is enough capacity there so that people would be able to get out. And all of that delay would really be experienced by the people who are trying to exit the site. And it wouldn't impact the traffic along Gould Street in that area. Um, moving down to the Highland Avenue and Hunting Road intersection. There are a couple of movements that would still operate at a level of service E, but these are generally the low volume movements through the intersection. Um, and they are coming back to a no build condition. Um, so really the conclusion of our traffic study was that there is a mitigation package that could be implemented that would bring the operations of these study areas intersections back to a no build condition. Um, essentially meaning that there would be no significant impact to traffic operations in the area as a result of the development if these mitigation measures were implemented. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mary Ann to talk through some of the fiscal impacts.
Thank you, Rebecca, and good evening, everybody. Um, as Adam indicated at the start, this rezoning has been over five years in the making. It is work that the town has undertaken proactively, recognizing that this is a highly desirable parcel for redevelopment. A parcel that the town and direct neighbors have all said that they would value something at the site that would signal an entrance to Needham. And an area if redeveloped under the current zoning that would disadvantage the town and our citizens for the next generations. This proposal is responsive to the concerns that we heard from citizens. Um, the planning board stepped back to rethink density and to better understand traffic in the area. A pandemic has intervened, so the planning board's done their best to plan around that by indicating what the worst case might be, looking at pre-pandemic, uh, traffic, for example, for particular scenarios. As you all know, until there's a proposal, all of this is hypothetical. This zoning just creates the potential for new possibilities and it unlocks revenue opportunity for the town. Two years ago, we talked about the loss of opportunity and revenue to the town if the site were to be redeveloped under current zoning. We had raised the possibility of a warehouse then. Two years ago, I don't think we fully believed that a warehouse was twenty-four seven operations was a likely scenario. But given the pandemic and the number of delivery trucks in Needham, more local regional distribution centers are certainly a much more likely scenario today than it was in the past, all the more reason to look forward. The current site generates some four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in taxes for the town. And I happen to be the person who does not have the updated fiscal impact study. The planning board doesn't have that information quite available yet. It will be available later this spring. So the information I'm giving you is based on, uh, data that was available in October twenty nineteen. With the addition of a residential component, the net benefit to, to the town will be reduced from the values that were indicated in twenty nineteen and that I'm going to speak about tonight. Because there are in fact additional costs to the town as a result of a residential component. As you know, Needham has a split rate for commercial or for property taxes, which means that commercial businesses pay a greater proportional share of Needham's tax burden. Town residents benefit from an increased commercial base to share the property tax burden. As a result of this rezoning by right at an FAR of one point zero, the net revenues of up to four point three million dollars might be expected with redevelopment, four point three million dollars annually. If the redevelopment involved the special permit with an FAR of one point three five, then an additional one point five million dollars might be anticipated with a full build out. Maintaining the current zoning significantly limits the opportunity to benefit the town's taxpayers. As you recall, if the site were to be redeveloped, once a proposal is known, the planning board will work with the developer to understand the specific impacts related to their proposed project. This information starts to help you residents to understand what a development might look like and what the result on the residential and business of Butters might be and how it might be felt by our citizens. Rezoning would also give us a development that marks the entrance to Needham in an exciting new way. I look forward to hearing your questions and your feedback. Back to you, Adam.
Have I been unmuted now?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, uh, Natasha, and thank you Rebecca, and thank you Mary Ann. Um, tonight we have outlined the planning board's new proposal for Highway Commercial One. This new proposal includes a constructive feedback that Mary Ann mentioned we received over the past fifteen months. Specifically, we've included a multifamily residential use. We have reduced the scale and scope of development by almost twenty-five percent. And we have reduced maximum heights allowed both by right and by special permit. We've also seen that traffic mitigation measures are possible that based on even the largest density of development will improve the, uh, flow of traffic. We've also heard that this area can generate almost ten times the revenue compared with the revenue generated today. That revenue is used to offset program and infrastructure costs and alleviates a significant tax burden on the residential tax base. In a moment, I'm going to open the floor, uh, to questions and comments, a few, uh, ground rules, if I may. First, please raise, uh, please use the raise the hand feature in Zoom. And if you're on a cell phone, press star nine, uh, to raise your hand and to unmute star six. I'll take your questions and comments in the order that I'm able to see you on Zoom. Please be patient. Please remain muted until you're specifically called upon. And when you are called upon, please unmute yourself and state your name and your address. We'd ask you in an effort to ensure that enough people have an opportunity to, or the maximum number of people have an opportunity to speak, we'd ask you to keep your comments to no more than three minutes. And finally, in an effort to get as many people as possible, uh, to have as many people, uh, as possible speak, we like to ask you not to repeat the same questions and comments that others may have asked or made. Um, and so with that, uh, I would, um, like to try and call on some, um, people for comments and questions. Let's see. Who do we have? We have fourteen people. So this is the order that I'm going to take them. Uh, the first I see is, uh, Keith LaFace. Keith, can you hear us?
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Keith, if you could say your address, please, that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Keith LaFace. I'm at five oh four Chestnut Street. I'm a town meeting member for Presint E. And, um, I, I speak in support of this zoning change. Uh, as a former resident of the immediate area and still current owner of a home at the intersection of Gould and Central Ave. I feel it would be really beneficial to have some kind of attraction be made available for residents in that area. Um, as a father with two children under five at the time, the lack of walkable restaurants and shops was a major factor in us moving to a different home in Needham on Chestnut Street closer to Needham Center. Um, as far as a residential building there, I think as long as there's proper consideration, you know, from the planning board, uh, for the additional load on schools and emergency services, um, I think we should be willing to hear what comes down the pipeline in the future. And, uh, you know, in general, I know I'd love more reasons to shop in Needham instead of the occasional venture out to Legacy Place in Dedham or the street at Chestnut Hill. Um, I, I remember, and I still drive through the area, and I know that we, we, we looked at the, um, traffic implications. And I, I really hope that, you know, however we move forward, that any reasonable mitigation be implemented before the groundbreaking. I mean, I'm sure that the residents in that area don't want to wait until after the problem gets worse to, um, to, to, to put the, uh, you know, plan in place. Um, but I do think this is a really thoughtful proposal and I appreciate the town's effort to hear our ideas and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, very much, Keith. Appreciate, uh, your comments. Um, the next person I see is identified as Lee. I'm not sure if that's, uh, uh, Lee Newman, our town planner, or if it's, um, uh, another resident who just happens to go by Lee. Lee?
Hi, I'm just a resident. I'm on a one oh nine Evelyn Road.
Thank you.
Um, so I guess, what, what's the determination whether it's FAR one point three five versus one in the sense that, um, obviously the one point three five is a lot more traffic and there's a lot of residential just right behind Gould. You know, me being one of them and it is, of course, it's just a concern that there's, the traffic would just still be pretty awful.
Uh, so, uh, Lee, what's the question?
Um, the, the one point three five versus the one point O, the consideration. So after this, this zoning gets approved, when, when the five level versus the four level and, and, and whatnot.
I see. Uh, thanks for the question. So what we're really doing here with the zoning is, uh, is setting the parameters for development. And it really would be up to a developer to determine, uh, which way they wanted to proceed. So if they wanted to proceed by right, which would be the easiest scenario from a developer's point of view, because there are, uh, there's less regulatory oversight, uh, on the, on the developer. The town doesn't have as much opportunity, uh, to impact and to, um, seek any mitigation in fact. So it's, or very little. So as a result of that, it's very attractive to developers to pursue a by right scenario. It's less expensive, substantially less expensive, and it's a much faster to market approach. However, some developers are prepared to take a greater risk and to develop a larger project. But the process takes longer and they also have to deal with, uh, government oversight through the planning board as well as really from, from residents. So Red, so there will be a public, uh, process through the planning board. There will be multiple public hearings. And that's when people like you, Lee, other residents and other stakeholders would have an opportunity to speak directly to the, uh, to the developer and to express any comments. Now, we don't know what, uh, exactly what, um, uh, a developer will bring forward. A developer could go one way or the other, or they could do something in between. So, uh, so we just don't know. It's going to be up to the developer.
Okay. And a question, question, um, the R and D site that you guys are planning, what, what, what kind of site are we expecting for that? I guess I'm not really sure what that implies.
I really appreciate that opportunity to kind of correct and to speak to that. So what we've done is allowed through a number of uses by rider by special permit, certain, certain uses. And it's up to the developer to determine what they ultimately will choose to pursue. And that can depend on, you know, market demand for certain types of space. It could be office space or some kind of R and D space. Now, we've modeled out a scenario of a certain percentage of R and D space, a certain percentage of office or a certain percentage of residential. But that's really just for modeling purposes. It would totally be up to the developer. Now, the types of R and D would be, you know, we think of as life science type research and development. It could be, you know, medical laboratories. It could also be other forms of electrical or mechanical research and engineering. It could also be computer engineering. It could be intellectual, it could be other forms of high tech. So we're opening the canvas a little bit and we'll let a developer see what, what they are able to put together.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lee. Next up, I see Barry Pollock. Barry, what is your address, please?
This is Barry Pollock. I'm at 15 Pandoff Lane in Needham. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct J. Can you hear me okay?
Ken, thank you very much, Barry. Go ahead.
So there, there were a large number of people who participated in the program last year. And I do appreciate that some of the concerns have been addressed here. And I do think generally their support for expanding the uses and development there. It's, you know, the devil is in the details and, and questions about the size. So I appreciate that the numbers are lower. And I have a couple of questions about the numbers you gave, which I think was 56 feet without a special permit, 70 feet with all 200 feet back at that height, right?
So one was a function of by right and the other was a function by special permit. So
Yes, it's 56 feet by right and 70 feet special permit. Or 200 feet back at that height. Otherwise, you'd be more in the, is it two stories?
Two.
Or one story?
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
Yes.
So is that
Yes, go ahead.
Is that measured from the, the Highland Avenue height? Because there's a drop down towards the highway where, you know, is the 70 feet measured from the height of the, the natural land as it sits now?
So that height would be measured from, from really the bottom of the bowl. Although it depends, you know, where they actually choose to locate the building. Lee Newman, can I call on you for a bit more of a technical explanation if I haven't sufficiently answered that?
Well, it's going to be measured from the grade around the building. It's going to be an average grade around the building. And the height's going to be measured from that average grade. So if it's cited in an area with a, if it's said down, down in the bowl, it's going to be measured from the grade in the bowl. So that's, that's how it would be measured.
Thank you very much. And so Barry, that's actually, I'm glad you brought that up because we're trying to encourage, you know, the greater height to be pushed back closer to the highway as much as possible so that it's
So that's, that's what I was going to say is after last year's meeting, and a lot's happened since then. A lot of quiet about this since then, but, but a lot's happened since then. Several of us had, had gotten together, even formed an interest page where over 600 people in town would like to see a part of that property be recreational facilities. Much like the Wellesley facility that was developed in the past few years. And there's even an interested developer who might be on this call. It, it seems to me that based on the feedback I have from people in, in my precinct, 56 feet is still too high for part of this, though I think there'd be far less objection to that height by the highway. I think if there were certain uses that were viewed as having benefit for residents of the town, such as a recreational facility, there's no reason, this is a, a new definition of zoning, right? Needham has not used commercial highway one as a definition before. This is going into uncharted territories here, right?
Well, it's, I mean, that's the name of the district and yes, the concept of zoning, you know, has been, you know, applied in multiple different types of commercial districts.
But these numbers could just as easily be set at 48 feet and 64 feet instead of 56 and 70. Or perhaps the 70 limited for special permit right along the highway, but not in the other portions. It's closer to people's houses on Gould Street. Those, those kinds of numbers, those are things folks can talk about. And I'm curious, who is the best contact person on the planning board to receive feedback from residents who think these numbers are a bit too high, at least other than right at the highway?
So I, I appreciate that. I, I can definitely point you, and I'll say this, I guess, when we're, when we're through with a question and answer period, we encourage anyone tonight to please submit any comments and questions to the email address, which is planning@needhamma.gov. Again, that's planning@needhamma.gov.
My last, last quick question, just there was a reference to a land taking for the traffic mitigation. Might be in some, for someone in my precinct, where, what intersection would that be at?
So so any land taking, I think, specifically was, you know, it's speculative at this point. The, the aim would be as a function of making the improvements to the traffic at the corner of Highland and Gould, that the developer would effectively use their own land to widen that strip. That would make the most sense and they would effectively be doing their own takings. It would not be something that the town would, would do necessarily. But it's all, you know, it all would depend on whatever type of development goes in. So it's undetermined at this point. Barry, thank you very much. I now see Marcia's hand is up. Marcia, can you please state your last name as well as your address? Do we have Marcia? We do.
Oh, yes. Hi. Yes. Hi. I'm sorry. I couldn't unmute myself. I'm sorry. So Marcia, I live on Nonet Road, 166 Nonet Road. And right, right next across the street from Muzzy Ford. So my question is, first of all, I want to support some kind of restaurant. So, you know, some nice area like where we can go and hang because there's nothing in this part of Needham, literally nothing. And the other question is, did you guys study the impact of this construction on the value of the residential, existing residential houses?
So I appreciate that, you know, once we get out of this pandemic scenario, I know that my eight-year-old would love to go back to restaurants. So would my wife and I for that matter. So we certainly share that, that hope. In terms of, in terms of the property values, what I, what I can say is generally speaking, this, I am a local realtor. And I can say that proximity to, to retail can have an additive effect overall on, on property values in the immediate area on the residential base. Because it's regarded as, you know, as a convenience factor. There are a lot of factors that go into determining single, the value of single-family homes. But, you know, as compared to an area that has, that's served by retail and perhaps a restaurant where I might see you at versus at the same area without a retail, that level of convenience would do, would increase the property value in the following way. The home is regarded as, as more desirable. So there's more demand for that house as compared to the other house if the houses were equal. So that house would move faster and it would typically move at a higher price point. So it has a lifting effect on the surrounding community, especially as compared to, you know, an underutilized parcel of land that's predominantly pavement.
Correct. But I guess it depends on what type of commercial properties there, right? It's not, not every commercial property will increase the value of the nearby houses.
So the, the type, the type of, the type of development, the fact that there is development, well, we would anticipate would have a, an uplifting effect as compared to what's currently there now. But it's, but it's impossible to measure precisely what, what the exact impact would be on housing prices in the immediate area based on any type of development, whether it's an office building or an, an R and D facility or, you know, retail. It's just, it's impossible to determine that. Marcia, thank you very much for the question. I'd now like to go to Monte Krieger. Monte, what's your address, please?
33 Woodbine Circle. I was a little bit confused with the presentation about traffic because it sounded as though all of those numbers and estimates were based on only commercial, non-residential. But one of the, one of the thoughts is having a lot of residential housing there. So my first question was, was that included in those estimates for the traffic that we were told?
So I'm going to turn to Rebecca and let her answer, if I may. Rebecca?
Sure. Yes, thank you. So the reason that we didn't look at a residential component in the analysis that I showed you was actually that we did initially do a trip generation comparison, looking at what, what would be the traffic impacts in comparison to what we did look at for the mix of uses? And what would happen if we were to reduce down the amount of commercial space and replace it with 240 units of residential development? And what we actually found was that there was a reduction in the amount of traffic that would be generated by the site if we were to replace that commercial with a residential component. So what we were asked to do was look at a worst case scenario. What's the worst case traffic that this could look at, could look like in the future?
Did you, did you, did you account for many of those apartments having more than one car per apartment? What was your, what was your model?
Yeah. So we do it based on Institute of Transportation Engineers data for, for multi-unit homes is basically what it's for. Low rise, meaning that it's essentially anywhere from, I believe it's like three to five stories is the range that it could be for those types of residential units for multifamily homes. And so it does account for, some people will have one car, some people may have three cars. It, it accounts for a range of, of cars that people may have.
And the last point is you're hunting to Highland intersection by your models, even with mitigation, did get worse. Is that correct?
The intersection of Hunting to, so you're talking about turning from Highland Avenue onto Hunting Road, that movement?
Yes, that it got an E, I think.
Yes. Yeah. So that movement would be operating at a level of service E in that worst case scenario.
Which is worse than we currently have.
It is, it is a little bit worse than what you currently have. And what we were showing there was really a re-optimization of the signal timing at that intersection. So it's basically reallocating the green time so that the movements that have the heaviest traffic volume are experiencing longer green times going through the intersection to kind of reduce down the overall delay through the intersection. And that's kind of where we came back with that level of service E. So that it really reduces down the total delay for all vehicles going through the intersection or the average for all vehicles going through the intersection. There is certainly a different timing plan that could be implemented that maybe gets that E back to a D and something else gets a little bit worse, or a different development scenario that reduces down the impact so that that E goes away. But we were showing that it could potentially be an E in the, the build condition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Monte. Jerry Rovner. Jerry, what's your address?
My name is Jerry Rovner. I live at 48 Cynthia Road. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct B. My question, and by the way, thank you for holding this event. I think it's been very useful. My question deals with traffic. So if Rebecca still is available, I'm wondering what the dates were of this traffic study. Was it pre-COVID? Secondly, how far back up Central Avenue did you study? There were three schools on Central Avenue. And if it was pre-COVID, it was a tremendous amount of traffic on Central Avenue in the morning. Part of that is because there is a traffic light at the end of Central Ave at Chestnut Street in Newton. And that traffic light backs up cars almost to Webster Street. So what I'm wondering is, what was the geographic area that you studied? Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. So the, the first image that we showed, showed kind of the, the study area intersections that we looked at, which were along Central Avenue from the Gould Street intersection up to the River Park Street intersection. And then along the entire length of Gould Street between Central Avenue down to Highland Avenue. Those, the traffic counts that were done were all done pre-COVID conditions. So the ones that were done at Central Ave and Gould Street, those were done back in 2019, in February 2019. And then as well at the intersection of Highland Avenue, Gould Street and Hunting Road. Those ones were done in February of 2019. The other traffic counts were all done in 2015. And when we compared the 2015 to the 2019 data, we did show that the 2015 data was, was actually higher than the 2019 data. So we did include the 2015 data that was higher at those other study area intersections. Just again, so it was a worst case number rather than reducing them down. We kept those higher volumes to give a worst case baseline condition.
Did you tell me the dates of those studies? Did I miss it?
The exact dates of those studies, I don't have right in front of me, but I can tell you that the ones in 2015 were collected at all different dates, somewhere in June, October and December of 2015, depending on which location you're at. And then the, the ones that are Gould Street and Central Avenue and the counts at Gould Street and Highland Avenue were done in February of 2019, so pre-pandemic.
And did you do any study of the impact of the traffic light at Chestnut Street and Central Avenue? Because that's a major choke point as well.
We did not study the intersection of Central at Chestnut. No, that was not included in the study area.
Okay. And then one final question, and that is, is there any intent of the current owners, either Muzzy or Channel Five, to vacate those properties?
So we're not, we really have, have no idea. We're not, we're not aware of any plan that they have to immediately or otherwise vacate. It would, you know, it would depend on if they're able to make a sale and when.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jerry, John Capellas, what is your address, please? I think we may have lost John.
Sorry, that was my fault. John, would you raise your hand again? I pressed the wrong button.
So I'm going to look for John. He's back. We have you. For others with your hand up, we have 18 hands up. So we are working towards getting you. Appreciate your patience. John, Appreciate your patience. John, you're up, please. What is your address?
Uh, one twenty-five Evelyn Road in Needham.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I got a, uh, just a couple of questions. Um, I appreciate everybody putting all this information again, uh, together and presenting it to us and the work that the town, um, has done sort of to bring it to this point. Um, you know, a ma- a statement was made in the beginning, um, by you, Mr. Block, that said, you know, we're looking for something that could, uh, provide a stronger contribution to the town. So I, I guess, uh, my general question is, what do we mean by that? Um, is it a financial? Is it both? Is it more of a, a resource kind of thing? So what, what is that? What does that mean?
It means, uh, uh, multiple things. Uh, it means, one, that it is making a, a stronger financial contribution to the town. Two, that it's a, a modern facility with, uh, a greater aesthetic appeal. Um, and, uh, um, and also, uh, you know, providing greater amenities um, uh, to, uh, to employees that, and occupants of those buildings and, uh, part of the, you know, immediate, uh, residents of the immediate area.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, I got a couple of concerns. I guess one is primarily on traffic. And when we look at a development, uh, potentially of this scale on this side of one twenty-eight, um, my concern is, is, you know, one entry point to, to this location really from, from one twenty-eight north and south. Um, where, you know, our, uh, our development on the other side of one twenty-eight, I guess you have multiple ways sort of to get to one twenty-eight and, and, you know, we see the impact of track, but traffic on both sides. Is there and can there be a consideration for a direct exit off of one twenty-eight to this facility?
Uh, Rebecca, I'm gonna ask you to answer that.
Yeah, so, yeah, typically, um, so the, the ramps to, um, one twenty-eight are really under the control of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation or Mass DOT. And Mass DOT is generally not in favor and, and not amenable at all to providing, um, ramps directly into commercial developments or private developments. Um, so it's highly unlikely that they would allow that type of, um, access in directly from the highway.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I guess my, my, my next question is, has the impact of the project in Newton, um, been accounted for in a traffic study?
Say that again. Has the impact of what?
The project, uh, that's going on where the old Marshall's Plaza is on Needham Street in Newton, has that impact of that project been, you know, uh, added into sort of the traffic that's gonna bring into, into the study that you conducted?
Sure, yeah. So as, as part of our study, um, I mentioned that we projected traffic volumes out to a two thousand thirty condition. And in order to do that, we basically grew the traffic volumes out at a rate of one percent per year um, over that ten-year period. So basically growing out what's going through the intersections now, um, by about eleven percent is what it works out to. So that growth rate really is meant to account for developments like that in Newton that would, um, increase traffic in the surrounding area, um, as well as just general background population growth in the surrounding area or other unknown projects that might get developed between now and that two thousand thirty design horizon.
Hey, my last question. Um, so, so going back to my original question about a stronger contribution to the town. And I'm not, y- you know, too up on this, so, you know, just stop me if I'm, I'm asking an incorrect question. Is there, uh, any type of bylaw that would prevent, um, either, uh, a higher level education, not-for-profit, um, a medical campus, not-for-profit? Um, and then come on top of that in the R and D space, um, would we limit anything, um, sort of like the quote BU building, which is, uh, the National Emerging Infectious Disease Lab? That type of setting.
Lee, do you want to, uh, uh, jump in on this?
Well, I would say that, um, and that exec uses, um, um, uh, would be allowed, um, at the property. I mean, chapter forty-eight provides for certain kinds of uses that basically are allowed as of right and are exempt. So educational uses would be allowed at the property by right, um, as they would be allowed really basically anywhere, anywhere in the, in the, in the community. In terms of, um, I'm sorry, what was the second question?
So, so I guess, uh, exempting something like the, the, the emerging infectious disease lab in the R and D space, something of that nature.
Well, research and development would be allowed, I think, in the district, um, by special permit through the planning board. Um, and we don't currently have an exemption. Um, that would just be right. I think that would just be regulated through the health department.
John, in the, uh, interest of attending to some of these other, uh, nineteen attendees that have their hands up, uh, if you have any other follow-up questions, uh, please, uh, send them to planning@needhamma.gov. And now I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, Peter Olive to, uh, state your name and your address, please.
Adam, could I just mention for one minute, that BU facility is actually a highly regulated facility. I think we might need to investigate to know the answer to, um, Mr. Capella's question about that type of facility and whether that is covered under general R and D. I suspect it's not.
You're, I think you're right, Mary Ann. Thank you very much for, uh, elaborating on that. And John, we'll, uh, endeavor to get back to you. If you can, um, message us again at planning@needhamma.gov. Uh, we'll look into that further and get a more precise answer. Uh, I apologize, Peter. Uh, please go ahead and state your address.
Hi, Peter Olive, one-three-three Thornton Row. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct H. Um, question about the, uh, residential units. I'm glad to see the residential units in there. I've learned over the past year about the great housing shortage that were, uh, that's happening right now in Massachusetts. So, uh, it's very encouraging, uh, to have, uh, residential units included on this space. That's great. I'm curious why the, you know, it doesn't seem to be the most desirable, desirable place to have an apartment building. But, um, I'm curious as to why the, why the zone is capped at two hundred and forty units. Um, that's, I guess my first question. It seems like if you increase that, increase the residential units, the actual traffic burden goes down. Um, so, that's why, you know, why capped at two hundred and forty? Why not two hundred and sixty? Why not five hundred?
Uh, well, I, I appreciate that. We looked at trying to develop a, a mix of uses. And part of this is, you know, is determined on, on what the market will bear and it's beyond the scope of the government to, you know, to understand that. We try to, uh, find an appropriate mix of uses within these districts. Um, we, uh, use that number of two forty, uh, which I think I had mentioned, uh, which is a little less than, uh, uh, the mixed-use one twenty-eight area. And, uh, and having studied the, um, you know, uh, the various districts in town, that this number seemed to be, uh, a, an appropriate, um, uh, mix and balance.
Okay, uh, thanks. Well, I, I just, um, you know, with the housing shortage being so acute, uh, uh, that's kind of really what's driving the real, I think the real community need is, is, is really, uh, I, I, I hope we consider, uh, increasing the number of units. And the, the other question I had is, um, I heard some tax revenue numbers go by. I heard forty-five thousand dollars in, in the annual revenue. I'm not sure if that's the existing Muzzy site. Uh, and then I heard four point three million dollars in revenue, which is an increase of, uh, that's a factor of one hundred increase. Did I get those numbers right?
Um, Peter, the number was four hundred and forty-five thousand for the existing site or the existing parcel, which is, uh, as I understand, the number that's been given to me for all of Highway Commercial One there, which would be both Muzzy and Channel Five current revenue. So it's a factor of ten, basically, increase, uh, as a result of the rezoning.
Right, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Peter. Doug Fox, what is your address? You're up next, please.
Hi, uh, Doug Fox. I'm, uh, forty-three Mark Tree Road and I'm a town meeting member of Precinct F. Um, I wanted to ask about the traffic study, which I, obviously it's pieced together from a few different studies. And I, I mean, my constituents, the biggest concern whenever I've been probing on anything going into Muzzy, even though everyone would like something there, um, is traffic. Um, additional traffic between us and ninety-five towards one of the main access points there. And we've always been told that traffic always goes up through stuff we can't control. It's people going through town during those rush hour times. So that new study from two thousand nineteen that showed a decrease that we kind of cherry picked out and dropped in there, as you analyze and compare twenty, the twenty fifteen study to the twenty nineteen study, is that apples to apples? Like, how did that go down? You know, you talked about the one percent increase per year on average. How did it go down when everything else is going up? All, think of all the development that's taken place in this area. You know, between two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen, just something doesn't jive there that it went down. And I remember at town meeting, the previous traffic, I think who had done the two thousand fifteen, referred to that intersection in two thousand fifteen as an F, and with increased development become a very bad F. So I just wanna make sure we're really looking closely at that intersection because that is the one that would have the greatest impact on the greatest amount of residents in the town.
Thank you, Doug. That's right. And so, uh, Rebecca, I'll ask you to, uh, respond, please.
Yeah, so what we found from the, comparing the two thousand fifteen to the two thousand nineteen traffic volume. So while the, um, two thousand fifteen counts were being done, the Route one twenty-eight widening project was under construction. And, um, varying ramps were closed at certain times that resulted in traffic diversions that sent additional traffic through some of the study area intersections, particularly the Highland Avenue at, um, Gould Street and Hunting Road intersection, where traffic was being diverted down to Hunting Road, um, to go down to the next interchange, um, on Route one twenty-eight, while some of the other ramps were being, um, worked on as part of that, uh, widening project. Um, so that was the largest reason that we saw where the left turn, um, turning onto Hunting Road and then the right turn coming off of Hunting Road onto Highland Avenue represented the majority of that reduction in traffic, um, that we saw there. Most of the traffic on Gould Street was actually pretty similar. So when we're looking at the traffic that was coming through on Gould Street and comparing that two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen counts, was pretty close to the same. Um, the majority of that reduction that we saw was, was on and off of Hunting Road. Um, and that was really because of the traffic diversions from the construction that was ongoing on, on one twenty-eight at the time.
But, but wasn't the Highland Ave heading towards ninety-five, wasn't that an F at the time? And would that have been impacted by left turns from, from Highland to Hunting or Hunting to Highland? Um, it seems like that would stay the same if not increase. And if you reorient that traffic signal to optimize traffic from and coming from Gould Street, it seems that that F would get way worse.
Yep, so that, that intersection was operating with levels of service F and that, based on those two thousand fifteen counts that I mentioned, were, um, roughly about fourteen to fifteen percent higher than what was counted in two thousand nineteen, once that traffic was able to get back onto ninety-five. So, um, essentially by, by adding the additional lane on, um, ninety-five, it allowed for more traffic to stay there that typically would use side roads to get through because one twenty-eight was operating very poorly. And it eliminated that, um, diversion of traffic because of, um, actual construction activities. Um, so that's why we saw such a, a big, um, improvement in that intersection. One of the other things that I didn't mention is that there is an ongoing project right now, um, by Mass DOT to construct some improvements at the location of Highland Avenue and Gould Street. And when we did the analysis of the no-build condition, we assumed that those improvements would be in place at the time, um, that this project got constructed because that's, that's underway right now. Um, so I, I forgot to mention that earlier. So that is part of the reason why you see a little bit of improvement in the level of service there in comparison to the study that was done back in two thou- excuse me, two thousand fifteen. Um, and then the other reason is because of the opening up of one twenty-eight that has reduced down the traffic volumes as well.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you very much, Rebecca. Joni, uh, what is your address, please?
Can you?
We could for a second and then you muted yourself, I think. We'll try one more time. You, you had it and then you had lost it again. We'll try one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're golden, Joni.
Okay, I'm at one seventy-four Evelyn Road. And I have two questions. One is that the concern that was raised by the Heights Meeting, um, almost two years ago now, was green space. And I didn't hear anything about that in any of the plans suggested. And the second thing, again about traffic, I, I think that no matter what traffic studies show, it always ends up worse than the scenario. And I've seen lots of this, um, in my commute to, to teaching in Boston for thirty years. Um, but I wonder if there is any way to mitigate what certainly will be people learning to make shortcuts through Noanette and Lee and Evelyn and all of our quiet little residential streets with lots of children, once this is up and running. I'm very concerned about that.
Joni, I appreciate the question. I understand. And, and, uh, when any, uh, development proposal comes before the planning board, we will certainly rigorously study the developer's, uh, uh, traffic study at that time. In fact, we'll probably hire, um, uh, uh, a, a, a traffic engineering firm to conduct a peer review and to validate the information from any developer's engineer. And that's something that we'll look at very closely. And again, the public will have an opportunity to comment on that if and when a development arises. Uh, so I appreciate the questions. I'm now gonna ask Rachel Green. Uh, Rachel, what is, uh, your address, please?
Excuse me, Adam, if you don't mind. Um, the question about green space was not answered. And, um, Natasha showed on her slides the green space. We didn't expressly mention it. Um, I don't know if Natasha would just like to say a word about that to respond, uh, to Joni's question.
Sure, twenty percent of the site will have to be green space. And we showed it as, um, in the perimeter of the site, but it could be that the developer, um, could decide to, to, to do it in one area um, or, or others of the site. But there is twenty percent of the site is required to be, um, green space. Is that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Joni. Uh, Lee Dukas, what is your address, please?
Um, Adam, I think you had called previously on Rachel Green. And I, and I don't think that she ever got to speak.
Oh dear.
Hi.
I apologize. Thank you very much. Uh, Rachel, uh, please go ahead. Lee, I will come to you in a moment.
Okay, um, my address is fifty-five Sergeant Street. And, um, I just wanted to voice my support for as much affordable housing as possible in Needham. And I wanted to speak to the idea that I really believe the benefits of affordable housing, such as harboring racial equity and economic diversity, um, far outweigh any concerns about, um, maybe an apartment complex doesn't fit into the aesthetic of Needham. Um, especially considering that there are a lot of large houses, um, that, you know, not, they're not the size of apartment complexes, but, um, they are very large and that there are, um, really large buildings next to the Muzzy site. Um, and also the idea that modern developers do try to keep design and aesthetic in mind when designing apartment units, um, to try to fit in with the rest of Needham. Uh, so I'm just voicing my support for affordable housing, even though it is not what is traditionally built in Needham because I think it's really important. Um, so thank you so much for having this meeting and letting me talk.
Thank you very much for your uh, comments, Rachel. I appreciate that. Uh, Lee Dukas, what is your address, please?
Hi, um, my address is twenty-nine Tower Avenue, Needham.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Lee.
So I noted when you were putting the slides up that for residential use, they were looking to do twelve percent affordable housing. Why is it twelve percent versus the twenty percent required by forty B?
One part of the answer is that we weren't making a requirement on that. And then I may ask uh, Lee to provide a more uh, detailed answer.
Sure. Um, it actually is twelve and a half percent. And that's pretty best for the standard that Needham has been adopting in uh, it's some of its other commercial districts. So we just carried that standard forward. But the town through the planning board is currently um, looking at examining its inclusionary zoning policy and assessing whether or not there should be a revision to the standard that's applied across all of Needham zoning districts. Cause currently we have different affordable housing standards in place in varying districts because those provisions have been adopted over a period of almost a decade. So this proposal here currently just models itself after the most recent protocol that the planning board has adopted, which was that twelve and a half percent.
Could a developer then um, decide to do forty B here and make it, you know, pretty much they can do whatever they want with forty B as long as they offer twenty percent.
So there is certain requirements that they have to uh, go uh, meet in order to do forty B. Part of that has to do with uh, the existing amount of uh, affordable housing that the town itself already has. The town meets a certain threshold, then uh, then a forty B development isn't necessarily pursued unless it's uh, considered a friendly forty B, in which case there is a, a negotiation. And the town has a bit more, has significantly more um, ability to impact. But uh, if the town has meet, has met its uh, regulatory threshold, then that typically means that a, a forty B uh, would not otherwise be available.
Have we met that? I mean, I've heard that we did, did need it.
Yes, we have met that. I'm going to ask Mary Ann to continue.
So the town has met its forty B threshold, which means that the only kind of forty B that could come in here, if it were to take advantage of this, would be a friendly forty B, which would have to be something the town would agree to. And again, with all of this housing, this particular zoning just creates it as one of the possible things that could go on this site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Uh, Oscar Mertz. Oscar, you are, uh, please, what is your address?
Hi, uh, thank you and appreciate all your help. This is Oscar Mertz, uh, sixty-seven Ribery Hillway. I definitely thank you to everybody on this call tonight, to the board, to Madam Chair, to uh, continuing to pursue this site. It's, it's a remarkable opportunity. Clearly for Needham to re, reposition this gateway. I think as much as there's historic love of, of Muzzy, going so far back in the history of the town, I think um, a new version of, of that site would be welcome. And it was great to see what Studio NA did to help us see that. Really, really helpful a lot. Um, and I think all the conversation tonight in a nutshell seems to say there's a, the mixed use makes sense. Housing is important for, for Needham, for diversity, for economic diversity, for racial diversity. I think a forty, a friendly forty B would be fantastic here. It's a big site. It's a flexible site, um, highly visible. I also think that we need to um, be mindful of, of how density is such a benefit. I mean, we're looking at a hundred percent asphalt out there. And there could be nothing better than green space. And I hear everyone on the call tonight about that. And I think that's incredibly important for building this back as a part of this community, um, giving back. So I think um, even requiring some portion of that green space to be um, to the public benefit, I think was, which was recommended is an interesting idea. But no question that this is a big enough site to make it beneficial to everybody on that site, plus everyone around them. I would have a thought to maybe pose to this group, to the board, that maybe the special permit density of one point three five be made the as of rights. And that perhaps the special permit would be uh, be able to go higher than that. And I, I say that because when I saw the model that the Studio NA had produced, the, the, to match Wingate height of three, three and a half on the perimeter makes a lot of sense. And I think it feels in, very much in keeping with what's there. All the single family homes are further away. So I think this gateway would have balance, certainly at the scale of the gateway to the town, three and a half, three stories would be fine at the perimeter. So I would, I would ask the board to consider that maybe we look at this, we push back a little bit on the reduction in density, because I think that does, it's a big site. And um, there are a lot of opportunities here for a developer to do something uh, remarkable. Um, thank you.
Appreciate the creativity, Oscar. Thank you very much. Wendy Bloom, what is your address, please?
Hi, I'm Wendy Blum, eighty-nine Parish Road. I want to speak in favor of as much residential as possible in that site. And the goal of the residential um, would be to increase affordable housing in Needham. We, for, in order to bring economic diversity here, but even more so to bring some racial diversity to the town. I know it's very important to a lot of people here that we don't allow Needham to be just a white space, but to be welcoming to people of all ethnicities and races. And um, I, I think having more density at that site would be beneficial for Needham in order to get that um, racial diversity. And I would like to even go further and say that if we do have affordable units there, that we maybe do some um, some remedy to past harms that have been done to African-American families through redlining and restrictive zoning um, here in Needham. To maybe give preference in affordable housing to uh, to black families. Knowing that not all black families are poor and not all of Needham is white. But I think we should try to um, uh, change the balance. And so I'm really pleased that the city is, that the town is, is working to develop this site because it has so much potential to um, really develop Needham in a good way.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Appreciate your comments. Noah Mertz, Noah, what is your address, please?
Hi there. My name's Noah Burtz. My address is sixty-seven Ribery Hillway. And I want to speak, oh, precinct I. Uh, I want to speak in support of the, the special zoning and permitting, the FAR one point three five and, and higher. I, I think anything that would maximize the, the density and the specifically affordable housing possibilities is really exciting to me. I wanted to just kind of voice um, voice an important perspective that I haven't heard yet in the discussion, which is, which is not looking just at how this, uh, like developing this plot could benefit us as a town, but how we as a town, as Needham, can use this opportunity to benefit the region of which we're part and be a good reasonable na, uh, region, regional neighbor. As Peter mentioned before, there's a, a major housing crisis in Massachusetts, especially in the Boston area. And um, I think it's really critical that Needham recognizes the way that we're intrinsically tied to all of these dynamics, both historically, like Wendy mentioned, through exclusionary covenants and redlining, which has shaped who is able and has been able to live in our town and the demographics of our town. I think that we really have some work to do to right the wrongs of our history. And this is a major opportunity to do so. Just to provide an example of a town that's kind of undertaking this work, Lexington adopted recently. It's, let's see, the, the Human Rights Committee adopted a resolution declaring racism as a, a public health crisis. And they consider systemic injustice in, in all major town decisions. And I think that, you know, Needham doesn't yet have a, a, a resolution like this. But this is an opportunity for us to really consider how we can take this opportunity to right those wrongs. We also had the Housing Choice Bill at the state level uh, pass, which signifies a major public will to increase density. And I'm really, really excited to hear that Needham's planning board is considering more inclusionary zoning. I hope to see that, you know, affecting development in other parts of Needham as well. Uh, and I, yeah, just to, to reiterate, I would really push for Needham to pursue any plan proposals that would uh, directly move us in the direction of, of equal justice on the regional scale, increasing density, increasing affordable housing. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Noah. Just uh, uh, in the interest of time, because we're going to run out of time shortly and we still have a number of people with their hands up. Uh, I, I'm going to ask uh, participants again to uh, ensure that they're uh, speaking on or asking a question that has not already been addressed or discussed. Just in the interest of being able to get as many people as we can. Uh, Elaine Fine, Elaine, what is your address, please?
Actually, it's Ellen Fine and I live on Greendale Ave.
Thank you, Ellen.
So um, uh, my family um, came to Needham in the fifties. And I gotta be honest, my folks would be really upset if they saw the Needham of today. It's a Needham for the wealthy, by the wealthy, and pretty much for the wealthy who are mostly white. I study uh, permaculture design, which is a really different way of looking at design and looking at the world than how this project is, as much beautiful work as you folks have done. It's really different. If you can indulge me a little bit, I'll explain the three basic uh, precepts, which are care for the earth, care for the people, and fair share. And when I look at the kind of proposals that we're making zoning for, I don't see that in there, unfortunately. What I would suggest is that we take a step back and a lot of the people who've been so thoughtfully part of this, you know, the Heights Association. And that maybe we even think about developing this as a community, as opposing to it goes to the highest bidder or the lowest bidder, however that works out. Um, another thing I'm going to ask us to think about is how long is the construction period? Since I've been living back in Needham for about eight years, about six and a half of those years have been filled with construction directly around me. Two to three highway projects right in front of my house, several McMansions being built in my neighborhood. The town is doing a very poor job in restricting these kinds of things. So um, what I'm asking some of us to think about is why are we pushing the only exclusive financial um, sorts of development for the larger spaces as genetic or biomedical or high tech? Why are we not thinking of things like an art center, a hockey rink, a multi-use um, uh, facility that's a community center? Once again, bringing it back to town development versus commercial development. Why not a wonderful theater? And when we're thinking of things like really what we need to be thinking about the future is like, how are we going to be growing our food? Can we not have an indoor growing space? Could one of these spaces be, um, why are we excluding, uh, you know, a big revenue maker like um, indoor medical marijuana cultivation? I'm also curious about what happens to Channel Five. And as I'm envisioning something here, I too am going to echo what everybody said about the green space. The green space, not just like fake lawns with a lot of chemicals and fake trees, but real, honest, like heritage trees, fruit growing, um, guild culture and the, the ideas of permaculture and really growing and using your space so that you're not destroying the environment. How are we looking at climate? Is climate even been considered in this as part of our um, building? Solar, um, you know, regenerative agriculture and all those sorts of things. And aesthetically, what I saw there is the typical development, I hate to say it, schlock that we see all over every suburban town now. Why aren't we not thinking of things like tiny houses, like a community of a hundred tiny houses? Reusing and recycling the existing Muzzy Ford building and building that into something so that we can create our names Needham as a community that regenerates and recycles buildings, as opposed to smashing them down and building something that's non-sustainable and non-energy efficient. And so I'm just going to say, can we take a step back? And also what happens to Channel Five? Channel Five has been associated with Needham and Needham with Channel Five for like forty, fifty years. What happens to that? Are we just going to give them the boot? So let's really rethink this. And I would love it to get a group of people together, you know, including some of the people um, who are on the various boards. And how can we look at this once again, care for the earth, care for people and fair share? Because that is the kind of Needham that I want to leave as a legacy to future generations. Commercial development with high tech and an R and D place, really what does that do? It makes us more money, but does it make us a better community? And what I'm suggesting is about a revenue generation as well as fair share, more racial equity and all the kinds of equitability that I spoke of. So um, it was really more of a comment than a question. And um, I guess the only question you could answer in there is how many years of construction? And I live over on Greendale. Once again, how are we going to be impacted? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Uh, I'm also going to ask people, just in the interest of time, to keep their comments to three minutes. Next up is Holly. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name, Sherbanier. Uh, Holly, what is your address, please?
Hi, it's Holly Charbonneur. I'm at ninety-four Satcham Road and I'm in District J. I have a pretty brief question. First, I did want to say thank you, Ellen Fine. I really appreciated everything you said about community. That's huge. But to keep with the time limit, um, I'm wondering if the new zoning will include any energy efficiency requirements for the new buildings? Specifically, would we have a basic lead silver requirement? Or would we be like some of the more progressive towns and cities that are even requiring gold or better?
I, I, I appreciate the question. And uh, just in the interest of time, we still have many people that have their hands up. I'm going to uh, uh, ask Artie Crocker to continue, please.
Thanks, Adam. I appreciate it. Uh, a couple of questions. One is on the perimeter, you're, you're showing on, on one of the options, you're showing the housing on the perimeter. Is that because only housing will be allowed on the perimeter? First question, if you can answer that.
Uh, is housing the, sorry, Artie, we're asking if the housing is the only option?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the only, the only option where you show housing and the only option where you say, show buildings on the perimeter on Gould and Highland is housing. So is, is housing the only thing allowed on the perimeter there?
No, uh, no, there are other uses allowed on the perimeter. That was just a, uh, just a sample.
Okay. The other thing is this reference to Wingate. Uh, the Wingate building directly across the street is not three stories high. It's maybe a two and a half stories high at the most. The, the Wingate building that's, let's call it three stories high is the one that's down in elevation across kind of running perpendicular to the road. So in no way, shape and form is that Wingate building to be representative of the height of buildings on Gould Street. Um, I, I, I'm strongly against the, a two, even a, a three, even a two-story building that's ten feet away from Gould and, and Highland Ave. That is in no way represent, representing a gateway into Needham. If you, I mean, if someone wants to see a two or three-story building that close to the road, just go up, go up the road near Panera Bread. I don't know if it's Second Ave, I forget which road that is. Go up that road and where it takes a corner, you're going to see a fairly new um, apartment building there that's literally ten feet, give or take from the road. It's about the ugliest thing you could ever see. In this, in this, in this, this possibility is ten feet from the road. Now, I'm pretty certain at town meeting, a lot of people were not going to be in favor of something as close as ten feet from the road with a two or a three-story building. So I, I think that's something that has to be looked at. As far, and again, getting back to the gateway and, and what we are as a community. I mean, I, I think we get lost and I think we, I truly think we get lost in that. Ellen, thank you for a number of those confident comments. I think we get lost in that. So I, I do not favor at all a, a proposal that is even gives the possibility of having those buildings there, because that is not a gateway. That is not representative. of having those buildings there because that is not a gateway. That does not represent of anything that's going to raise the value, I would say, of the houses across the street from that. It's I consider it ugly. And I do not think we want that as a gateway into the, it's not much of a gateway. So so please, I would be hard pressed to believe that any any focus groups you had would not have already shared that they do not want something that close to the road. To me, this comes across as pleasing. I'll get off, get off in a second. But this comes across as the plan that was to some degree that was already brought to town meeting with, yes, a slight reduction in some of the numbers, but still it's right against the road. So I don't know what the I don't know what the question is there, but I'm not happy with that. I'm not happy with what I see there. Yes, that setback, no.
Artie, thank you very much. I'm going to now ask Jay Berlin. Jay Berlin, what is your name and your address, please?
It's John Berlin, sixty seven Parker Road. So just two, two quick things. The woman earlier who lived over on the Gould Street side, I know, said something about traffic, which I do agree with. So what I'm wondering is if the people who did the traffic study have some information or experience with taking a look back at their projections to see how accurate they are. Because, you know, it just seems when you say that there, you know, when you talk about eight thousand trips, which is or, you know, like four thousand cars a day or forty five hundred cars a day in Needham to say that, well, if we just add these lanes, it won't impact traffic, just seems hard to believe. So in their experience, can they look back at a projection they did on projects and say, yep, what we said and what we did came true? Or were there problems with it? And then my other point was was really more also about climate and not just about in terms of building the space screen, but the impact that all these additional cars are going to have on the climate within Needham, if there's been discussion about that.
Thank you very much for the question. We're we really are quickly running out of time. We're going to end it here. We've been going, we're going to end it momentarily. We'll take two more calls until nine twenty. And then at that point, we'll have been at this really for a couple hours. So thank you for the for the comments and questions. Judy Pelletier, what is your address, please?
Hi, this is Judy Pelletier. I I live at one oh seven Gould Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Judy, we can. Thank you very much.
So just really wanted to ask if there is any way that we could consider increasing the amount of the site that could be developed for retail. I just think, you know, as a few of the other residents have expressed, it would be great to have some some walkable amenities over in that part of town. And also from the point of view of traffic, which obviously, living, you know, practically right next door to us. You know, I'm very concerned about what I think is about a five hundred percent increase in the traffic. Not all of that will come down Gould Street, but certainly a great deal of it will. So I think that, you know, retail, a retail use, you know, as opposed to office or residential, you know, would help spread the traffic out throughout the day rather than everybody coming or going during the peak hours. So that's that was one of my questions. And then secondly, again, to points that were already raised, I really think the traffic along Central Ave, especially down to the light at Chestnut Street, really needs to be considered, you know, given the pre pandemic, you know, backups, you know, up to Gould Street and even past that.
Thank you, Judy. I appreciate that. Adam Cole. Adam, what's your address, please?
Hi, thanks. I'm on Hillcrest Road. And I'm speaking on in favor of the sports complex idea. If you look at the demographics of Needham, we have about a third of residents are under the age of twenty four. And when you add in the number of parents of children, you've got forty percent of forty plus percent of residents in the town that could benefit and appreciate such a facility. If you look at the Wellesley Complex, it's packed all the time. And I think it would be a really good opportunity for our town to have something similar. The one question, which I don't know if you have the opportunity to answer, is in the initial zoning, it seemed that an indoor sports complex was allowed by the permitting. And my question was, why the change in the proposal where would an indoor athletic facility be made up of a require a special permit? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. I'm now going to ask M. Rudy for your address, please.
I am Michael Ready of sixty nine Melrose Ave. And I'd just like, I'd like to echo Ms. Fine's comments. I'm concerned that the planning board here seems to be taking a reactive approach to what some developers evidently have hinted at, rather than taking a more holistic or visionary approach that really will benefit the community. So along those lines, I'm actually, I'm disappointed that the mitigation analysis by GPI focused exclusively on optimizing traffic flow at the intersections. There is, of course, an unused MBK right of way, the railroad right of way on the northern edge of the parcels. And Mastod and DCR are obligated to reconstruct the two bridges over one twenty and the Charles. So my question is, what have the planning board and the select board been doing to leverage this right of way in the way that Newton has done very successfully with the Upper Falls Greenway?
Thank you very much, Michael. We have time, I think, for one more comment. Paula Jacobson. What is your address, please?
So I operate the Charles River YMCA located at eight sixty three Great Plain Avenue. We also lease a second site at three eighty Chestnut Street. I would just like to state that I appreciate the town's efforts in expanding opportunities for new and additional usage as what has been coined as the gateway to Needham. As many of you may know, the Charles River YMCA has been in existence in Needham for more than a hundred and forty years and is a committed partner and contributor to the health and well-being of its citizens of all ages, providing a wide variety of recreational activities. As one of the town's meeting members mentioned earlier, and I think there were a couple of more comments, there has been a number of research studies completed that have indicated the desire for a recreational facility within the town. I would like to state and take this opportunity to state publicly that we would like to work with any potential developer and be considered as a viable anchor to any mixed use development project that could include an art and cultural center, a community center, and that might include outdoor park and recreational space. We are open to any of this and could certainly be a lesser for this for any of these projects. Thank you for your time.
Paula, thank you very much. And thank you to all of the all of the participants, speakers, and questions. Or people have asked questions. We still have a number of people with their hands up. Unfortunately, we're not going to have time to to get to you. So for everybody, we would ask you to send your comments and questions. I'm sorry that we ran out of time to get to everybody. The email again is planning@needhamma.gov. We're grateful for everybody attending and participating in our community meeting this evening. Thank you very much. We've received some very good feedback here and some excellent questions that the planning board and the working group will review. The planning department will post this presentation and the materials on the website. forward slash twenty twenty one underscore HC one. Needhamma.gov forward slash twenty twenty one underscore HC one. The planning board will hold a public hearing to present the related zoning bylaw amendment on Tuesday evening, March sixteen. The bylaw will be published prior to that hearing, so people have an opportunity to review it. Ultimately, the planning board intends to present a zoning bylaw amendment to town meeting this spring. I now like to take this opportunity to thank to thank our panelists this evening, Natasha Spada, Rebecca Brown, and Marion Cooley. Also, I'd like to extend my thank you to Lee Newman and Alex Clea and Clay Hutchinson, our excellent staff for helping to facilitate this meeting tonight, and all of our colleagues on the on the planning board. And at this point, Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Adam Block, for moderating this meeting. And there, the motion to adjourn has been made. And is there a second?
Second.
Ted Owens seconds that motion. So I'll call for vote of the board. Adam Block.
I.
Ted Owens.
I.
Martin Jacobs.
I.
So we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Night, thank you.